The other thing that the committee is working on is that we received from Mrs. Chavez a recommendation on January the 7th of 2019. So we asked for some of the policies and everything within our policy handbook. We received that on January the 27th, so we asked for a review by CCHNA and we received their initial input on February the 4th. And so this review was then forwarded to the Board Policy Committee prior to the meeting for their consideration. And we have just now begun studying those recommendations and the reaction from CCHNA. So we should have a report for you sometime soon. But on behalf of the committee, we are presenting a revised nondiscrimination, equal opportunity policy. The recommended policy uses the existing board policy language, but makes one very important change. The main reason for asking the Board to reconsider this policy are the citations contained in the old policy. Most of those citations are no longer valid, as a matter of fact, only three are. The new approach names the federal laws as the underpinning of all the laws surrounding nondiscrimination. Should the Board accept our recommendation, the district would be better positioned to address the federal agencies that hold us accountable for these laws. These citations also serve as a quick reference guide to nondiscrimination laws. So for these reasons, the Policy Committee respectfully requests the Board to consider this recommendation.
And as Dr. Carnes said, Mrs. Chavez had presented this and so per board policy, she's eligible to speak first on the topic. Just a reminder that the speaking, the public addressing the Board is a three minutes and it must remain on the topic at hand.
I did not realize that I only had three minutes, so this will have to be very quick. Before the timer starts, I wanted to say that Vol was sitting in the back. My son texted and asked him what the link was to watch it. So people are interested. People do want to know, and he's a freshman, so just so you guys know that. Thank you for allowing me to speak, although the minutes will be dwindling very, very fast. I guess I will just jump to the most important ones, which are member of Board ethics. Our current policy is based on the Indiana School Board Association and eloquently articulates the role of the school board members in the commitment to our public schools. These ethics have been a part of our current policy for some time, and from what it seems, these ethics have been given little attention. We have witnessed school board members becoming too involved in the administration of our schools. As per your current ethics policy, your job is policy and policy alone. We have school board members meeting only with some parents and community members, not being open to meeting or responding to emails without bias, not being strategic in their dialogue. You respond to all of us or to none. As per your current policy, school board members are not allowed to convey in private. We have school board members representing personal criticisms of leaders in our district, including fellow school board members, on social media, texts, and emails. This is detracting from the goals of our school board. As per your current policy, school board members should present any personal criticisms directly to the superintendent. We ask that the equal education opportunity policy for our schools be revised to include gender bias or sexual orientation. We make the suggestion based on parent discussions and concerns throughout the community that our schools must reflect their current decisions related to Title IX of the U.S. Civil Rights Code. The Title IX states that no person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in, denied the benefits of, or subjected to discrimination under any educational program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. Specifically, the numerous federal district courts, including the Seventh Circuit, which Indiana is a part of, have found that schools are required to accommodate gender identity, including transgender. Given recent actions proven or perceived of board members that have done unnecessary harm to parents and children in our community, it is imperative that the Board reset their commitment to include all children. By means of adopting policy that does not allow the personal belief systems to determine the inclusion of every student in our community that deserves to be treated and respected as an important member of our public schools. All children need to be included in our public schools. If any board member does not agree with this, they must step down immediately. The Board's advocacy against students that identify their gender or sexual identity in ways that are not similar to your own goes against the Seventh Circuit Court. That's it. It was supposed to be 15 minutes, and that was really horrible that I went through all this and submitted it, and I didn't get to speak properly.
It is a ceremony, because what you wrote is what they can hear.
The Mrs. Chavez comments and policy recommendations were presented to the entire Board. They all have the documentation and all of the reference materials, and I believe, I can't speak for them, but they've all reviewed it thoroughly, and the Policy Committee has reviewed it as well, so it's been reviewed.
I appreciate you guys reviewing it, but we need to take action, and it needs to be approved. And that is the bottom line, that the things that are going on in this Board cannot continue. You do not have the public's trust right now.
We have some more speakers on this topic.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question? No. No, it's, the meeting is in the public, but we do not have dialogue with the public. So we can discuss amongst ourselves, but I would like to go through the other speakers and then we can have our conversation. So the next person signed up to speak is Kathy Golden.
Well, let's just all hear amongst ourselves.
There are three more speakers.
What do you have to say? You guys spent a half hour, 45 minutes talking about, talking about Son Park or whatever. Go ahead and have a discussion, have an dialogue.
No, we will, but there are three other public speakers signed up to speak on this agenda item.
Well, they had to wait 45 minutes for you guys to do, to talk.
Excuse me, I'll have to ask you to leave if you continue. Go ahead, Kathy.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Golden, and this is my husband Todd. We have four children who attend HSE schools. At the November 14th, 2018 meeting, I expressed concern that a current board member who happens to not be here this evening had posted comments, yeah, she wasn't there at that meeting either, had posted comments on her public Facebook page that demonstrated intolerance towards transgender students. Unaware at the time of the laws protecting her elected position, at the closing of my statement, I asked for the Board's consideration for her removal from the school board. Over 1,000 individuals who signed a petition to have her removed from the Board and myself have never received a response from you. Has she ever been held accountable? Additionally, on January 4th, 2019, prior to committee assignments, I sent an email to four board members, the Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer, and the Superintendent. I had asked my emails to be forwarded to the newly elected board members. In that email, I specifically asked for the board member who made disparaging remarks, who's not here tonight, about transgender students not be assigned to the Equity Committee and to the Policy Committee. Again, silence from the Board. My request was met with assigning her to the Policy Committee, along with another board member who believes people choose to be gay. That same person, that same person was also assigned to the Equity Committee. At the last Equity Committee meeting, Dr. Buchanan Rivera asked us what stood in the way of equity in our district. Our group suggested individual bias and system bias. Merriam-Webster defines bias as "an inclination of temperament or outlook, especially a personal and sometimes unreasoned judgment or prejudice." What is being done to impact the individual biases and system bias present here in this room? The HSE mission statement states, "HSE schools as a forward-thinking school district provides educational opportunities to ensure the success of each and every student, to become a responsible citizen, and to positively influence an ever-changing world community." Forward-thinking? Ever-changing world community? Are you board members educated about the ever-changing world community? The student body of 10 years ago is a lot different than the student body walking the halls today. The HSE school corporation staff that you oversee is being educated about transgender students. In order for the school board to fulfill the HSE mission statement of forward-thinking and to positively influence the ever-changing world community, it is imperative that you also become culturally competent in the unique needs of the LGV TQP plus students. In closing, I am requesting that all current and future board members be educated about transgender students. The curriculum's in place, it's already being taught. It's already been taught to all the students, all the staff. Additionally, I want to know how board members are being held accountable for a conduct that doesn't align with the school board, Board of Ethics, including Amanda Shira, the board member that I spoke about in the November 14th meeting. And I would like to thank Jennifer and all of, where is she? I would like to thank you for all of your hard work and the many people that helped you over the last 90 days so that my voice is finally validated. It's frightening and sick that you were silenced tonight. And they don't want to hear what the community has to say.
No, they don't. That's very obvious.
So thank you for listening, I appreciate it. I hope you're.
We have some additional speakers on nondiscrimination. I have next Hannah Pratt and Corbin Yorkman. And just a reminder too, if discussion is about students or employees, please do not mention names, because that is a violation of the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. So feel free to speak, but please withhold student and staff employee names.
On December 3rd of 2018, myself and some of my female teammates were called down to talk to Mrs. Young, a dean at Fisher's High School, to report a sexual harassment allegation against a male swimmer. The following weeks for multiple female swimmers consisted of attempting to balance school swimming and hours of meetings regarding the harassment. The situation caused an extreme level of both stress and tears. Many brave young females decided to share their story to an officer, expressing their fears about sexual assault. Ultimately, their efforts paid off through the Title IX findings that were addressed in an email sent on January 28th stating the following. Due to substantial cases of harassment involving DS and that the swim environment cannot be altered in a way to mitigate the hostile environment or potential for future harassment, DS will not be allowed to compete, practice, or interact with the team. Yesterday, I was told that this swimmer would be competing for Fisher's at the sectional meet. Not only has administration failed to act in the interest of the majority of the swim team and the victims of sexual assault, but they also lied to the team by telling us that we were safe. I'm here today because although administration has avidly advocated for the best interests of the assaulter, they have failed to stand up for and protect the victims of the assault and the women's team as a whole. The action administration made set the precedent that any elite athlete can participate in postseason regardless of their terrible action. Clearly, administration has disregarded the opinions of the students at Fisher's, so I feel that it is my responsibility to stand up for myself and others that have not been protected. What this athlete has done is absolutely disgusting. It's absolutely disgusting that the efforts and bravery of girls who went into hour-long meetings and came out of them crying were for nothing. And I think it's absolutely disgusting that I have to make the decision to either support my team and therefore support sexual harassment, or betray my team at sectionals. It should not be the responsibility of a 16 and 17-year-old student to stand up to sexual harassment for the whole school system.
I know for a fact that myself and my teammates will not be coming to the school with any other issues like this, because we feel as though we were not heard and we were not supported.
Can we talk? Yeah, we can discuss at the end. We have one additional speaker on nondiscrimination. If I read the name correctly, Nancy Gates, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
As a former educator, parent, and grandparent of five HSE students, I think the Fisher's High School administration, because of recent actions supporting one male swimmer, is exhibiting discrimination against the Fisher's High School girls' swim team. It's my granddaughter. Namely, the girls had to deal with suggestions of disturbing sexual actions against them. In addition, the girls were told they would have to take training as a result of one male swimmer's action. It is my opinion that the guilty party received punishment, not the innocent. In addition, in the age of Me Too, I find it very disappointing of this school corporation that boasts the highest high school graduation rate in this state to allow this discrimination to members of the sectional swim team champions and third-place high school state finishers. I ask you, where is the justice?
Thanks to the final speaker on the topic. As a refresher, the topic is the nondiscrimination policy. Dr. Carnes has presented an updated version from the Policy Committee, but I'm sure there's additional discussion.
Now, can we talk? I think that there are a couple of different things going on here. Obviously, the last two that talked is something that is a bit disturbing to me, because number one, I didn't even know that those people were going to speak. Number two, as a matter of, a couple of weeks ago, we were told that he wouldn't be returning to the team. So I don't understand what.
We were too.
So I don't understand what happened or didn't happen. But that's alarming to me. What's alarming to me is that we, is that you believe that we have some, that we know about all this and we don't. That, whether that's right or wrong, we talked, you know, somebody talked about, you know, we only are supposed to set policy, but yet you bring these things, because this is execution of policy. I believe that our policy does talk about these things, and it's how it gets executed, it's how it gets implemented. And I don't know that we, as a Board, can do that. But I will tell you that I am honored to find out that he will be competing, because I did not think the swimmer in question, DS here, was going to be competing. So I don't know how we resolve that or where we go with that, but it's absolutely contrary to what we were told.
Any other conversation?
Since this is up for first reading, I would move to table it, send it back to the Policy Committee for further review. And I would like to suggest that we schedule an executive meeting to hear from members of the community, school counselors, to make sure that the Board, every member of the Board truly understands the issues that some of our students are dealing with in the HSE TQP community, before anybody votes against adding language to include sex discrimination based on gender, gender identity, or sexual orientation. Because my concern is that not everybody is that exposed to those issues or truly understands those issues. And if our district was going to talk about mental health, we cannot leave this out. And I think every member hasn't had that opportunity to really hear how these issues affect the first two days.
I'd like to pose a question, Dr. Carnes, if I may. Can you describe how this policy serves the administration in doing its job, or how it fails to, or how this is better? Just give us some description of how the policy empowers you to do your job.
It's primarily, the focus is on the citations that are in your present policy. And what we do, anytime we go into a case that involves us submitting the data, we provide it, it's always requested, we provide the board policy, as well as the administrative guidelines that go along with that. Your administrative guidelines are solid. They're posted in all the right places, they say all the right things, they comply with what the federal authorities are telling us how to handle these cases. It's strong. What we wanted to strengthen, though, in the process, is the other side of it, where we at least have a policy, we intentionally kept it simple, you know, because we thought that simplicity might serve us better, provided that the citations talk about the laws that underpin all of this. That was the rationale behind this.
Thank you. Any further conversations? I heard a suggestion. Is there an actual action?
I would just like to note too, for the Board, I don't know if everybody's had a chance to review it, but it did, I think, the parent emailed the whole Board. If you haven't received the spreadsheet, I can share it. But a parent took the time to research nondiscrimination policies for nearly every school district in our immediate area, from HSE to Westfield to Noblesville, Perry, Greenwood, Beech Grove, Brownsburg, DeCater, Avon, Lawrence, Springfield, every district close to us. And out of the 26, I'm looking at this, and I haven't had a chance to double check all these, but I have no reason to doubt any of the information, including links to all of their policies. Out of 26 of the schools in our immediate area, 18 include sexual orientation, 16 include gender identity, 15 include transgender students, one includes other because their language of sex, including not conforming to sexual stereotypes, which is another way of including those. Out of 26, only six schools don't include this language, one of which is HSE. So how dare we say we're forward-thinking if we can't.
I would like to add on to what you really suggested about maybe a panel or a board of community members, and the reason being is how that language, I think part of your question, Dr. Carnes, when we paraphrase, was how is this effective when we, you know, why is the language important? And I think that some of that can be answered by folks in that community to talk about, you know, what that impact means socially and emotionally, and why it's important to include specific language, just so that we can understand from a different viewpoint. So I would support having that information for us as a Board before we make any additions to our policy, so we can be thoughtful on how we manage that.
And I think Janet.
I don't know, for sure. I think both of us agree that it's not on students to educate us on this issue. It's imperative that we educate ourselves and set aside any personal beliefs you have on those types of issues, and really focus on what is going to best serve every single student and staff member and teacher in our district. And you can't do that without that information. So I think focusing, I don't know, school counselors or psychologists especially, or if there's teachers or students that want to come, obviously, we can ask them, because it's really not, they're really not their burden. But hearing from, I think especially school counselors or our own Equity and Inclusion Officer, to really hear how, it may be easy to say, well, they're covered under the statutes, but having that language in there means something to those students. And I think that really should be the most important. And as the parent, the Seventh Circuit has already ruled that these students are covered under Title IX, are covered under equal potential. We have to protect them anyway. So excluding them isn't necessarily leaving them out, but that language means something. And I think that hearing from people that are in that area that deal with these issues is really important. I'll stop talking. There's something. Let's talk, yeah.
And I agree. I've been on the Equity Committee now, this is my second year, and just, you don't realize what you don't realize until somebody brings it up to you and you can see what's happening. And we talk, we've been at the forefront of mental health, I think we're one of the wealthiest places in Indiana, but yet I feel like we need to have that language in there. I don't like the, oh, we're covered under this, that, and the other, because you can't see it specifically. And I also wonder about our teachers too, because we have teachers who fall under some of these, and they don't feel protected. And we can look at Ron Colley, granted, it was a, you know, a private school, but they don't feel protected because we don't spell it out. Fisher's, the city, does have language in theirs. I don't believe in its gender identity, but it does have sexual orientation. We don't bear this in our, maybe, you know, because of the circuit court rulings and all that stuff, and the statutes that we cite in our policy, but it means something to have it spelled out. I completely agree. And I do like the suggestion that we all undergo some kind of, the same training that teachers have, maybe abbreviated version because you're in the classroom, but there are things that are happening to our students that are causing severe mental health issues because of things that are happening in our schools. You know, because of gender identity, sexual orientation, race, you name it. I've had my eyes open lately with being on that Equity Committee, so I strongly agree.
By adding in this policy here, it's simple and short, we don't spell out any, and so if they're, if they're protected, how does that practically get played out different? I mean, you can put whatever you want on paper, but how does that practically get played out in schools? I mean, how does, how do more protections, how are more protections afforded to students, no matter what group they're in, whether it's race, religion, or sexual orientation? How do those get played out in real terms, if it's written on paper or not? We don't recognize any of these here. So, I mean, what's, what's the practical effect?
Process and practices are just critical to this thing. I think it's important that the Board say that it's important to us, then I think it's equally important, at least as important, that the administrative guidelines that support that implement your board policy. So I'm not advocating for anything, it's whatever the Board decides, but the language, as it reads right now, with the changes in the citation, said, "The school corporation will not discriminate in its educational or employment activities on the basis of any prohibited by applicable federal or state laws." That's a fairly powerful statement, you know. Does that mean that we can't write another policy that specifically says that? I can certainly bring that to the Board Policy Committee for their consideration as well.
Dr. Carnes, right now, the policy, as it's recommended at least, with all the updated citations, do you feel like it gives you the latitude and authority you need to support all of these different types of people?
I do, but I'm certainly agreeable that if it's the Board wishes, that they want to state that in stronger ways, because we have Shannon's research, by the way, which is very helpful to us. And we can certainly write another policy doing the same thing. But I think the most important thing is get them in alignment. You really have incredibly strong procedures in place. They're well advertised, we learned a lot of lessons from previous cases, you know, and especially with our dealings with OCR. So you have that in place. What's not in alignment is your board policy. So one way or another, if you could get those two pieces in alignment, we would go forward, I think, in a stronger way.
At a minimum, this will do that. At a minimum.
Well, I was just gonna, I wasn't gonna answer your question, I'm sorry. I was gonna talk, I was gonna address Brad, but, because I think part of this question, I might be wrong, but your question was, you know, there's, and I'm learning this, because I'm, you know, on the Policy Committee, so we have our policy, and we have our procedures and how we do that. And that's spelled out, and we're to be dealt on how we execute those policies. So if that, I think that was more your question on how we execute, is what you're, so that was part of what I was suggesting, some training in some, you know, real, you know, some folks to kind of guide us in that direction, you know, we can take some common practices from maybe like districts, or, you know, and we can kind of come together on something that is, you know, amenable to everyone.
So if this is good language here, where the meat of it comes in, in So, if this is good language here, where the meat of it comes in and the detail comes in is the?
Procedures.
Procedures, yeah. And, and I, I think the training component is really important. There are very few school districts anywhere, and not just the state of Indiana, that have a chief equity officer. We are, you should be proud of that. The other thing that's happening, there's an incredible amount of training going on because we, we might be well-intentioned, but we don't necessarily know exactly how to approach this. The, the conversation about the board, having a modified version of training would be very, very helpful because number one, anything and everything you do, judging by the applause that you're getting tonight and some of the other comments, whatever you do is incredibly powerful. You could send a powerful message by saying, "We're gonna undergo that training as well." So, it's not just the procedures, but it's also the training that's been going on, and I mean, there's been extensive training going on, and Dr. Borf has big plans for that training to, to go even deeper, including the central office. We're in the process of preparing for that. It's those two components that really help us.
I know that we already undergo some training. I spent multiple hours this past weekend watching many Safe School videos that talk about, you know, hostile environments, sexual discrimination, discrimination based on lots of protected classes. And so, I don't, obviously, there's discrimination that goes on in our schools. But, as far as I can tell by the policy and by the practices that we're supposed to put in place, I believe that we have the process in place to protect those students. Maybe it's just not being executed. I mean, everybody can, there are people who can turn blind eyes. I don't, I don't know what, I guess I struggle with what we need to do as far as a policy and how that gets played out, but we can, whether it's through, you know, executive session or whether it's education, I'm very open to learning more about that. But, I would be, I'm being inclined in not discriminating against anybody, okay? It doesn't matter if they're black or white or green or pink or, you know, boys or girls or, you know, believe they're, you know, another sex. I don't, I don't know that I want to, I don't want.
That's my point.
What?
That was a learning opportunity. Yeah, it's pretty significant for yourself.
Okay.
And that's why the board needs to make.
Any other questions, conversation?
Because you're making decisions for our students. Yes. And if you're judging them on your own.
This is, this is, again, I'm sorry, I have to repeat this. And this is the state of Indiana for every governing body. This is a meeting in the public, to be witnessed by the public, but not with the public, other than the recorded statements. So, please, please adhere to that, it's, it's state law. Any other comments and conversations?
So, just to that point, I just want to reiterate, yes, at, at minimum, the way it's written now, I don't know if it's still all covered, it's a minimum, but I don't think that's the case. I think, I think we ask the board to really think about, as Dr. Carnes stated, our board is not, we set the policy of the district and they follow that policy to set the students and policy of staff and our students. And if it didn't matter, then all of those other school districts wouldn't have added that language. The city of Carmel wouldn't have passed a human rights ordinance in two thousand and fifteen for that language. If it didn't matter, nobody else would be doing it because it does matter. And I would. I would move to table it and send it back to the.
I didn't think it was a motion, I thought it was a suggestion.
Well, I, I move to table this and send it back to the Policy Committee in, maybe not even to the main committee, but I would just ask the board, we still, the entire board, we can die for training on the other issues before I can report to the board.
I can make one more comment. The way it's written now too, we're at the whim of what federal and state law, how that changes. And I didn't like when I was a teacher, the state was telling me what I could and couldn't do in the classroom, and I don't like the fact that we are allowing federal and state laws to dictate who we can discriminate against and who we can't. So, I say we make our own.
I don't disagree that if we're in violation of whatever that ends up being, it can be thrown.
We can, I mean, federal required.
No, I don't disagree with that. I'm just saying if state or federal law changes and we're in violation of it, then that becomes a different issue. I don't disagree with Michelle's view.
Well, I, I would hope they would say, you can start discriminating against X and we're like, oh, we're not going to. Well, you're in violation, sorry. I mean, that's not gonna happen, so, yeah, let's spell it out. It's not, it's not. So, the motion to table it, I will second it.
All right, the motion is for tables.